Hi, Amari. Well, it is open to the public because it's a gathering large enough that it would be open to the public. So we're recording.
Like our regular meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we'll go ahead and start. We are expecting a few more people, but we're going to start slowly with introductions. So maybe within those few minutes, others will join us. So thank you all for giving up another Wednesday evening to spend with us. We appreciate you doing that. We're really excited to be able to bring our draft Historic and Cultural Resources Plan to the HLRB to get some of, to provide you an overview of how we've gotten to this point, but also to get some of your initial feedback and questions and explain to you how you can continue to be part of this process with us. And so before we dive into a lot of the details, I thought it would be helpful to do some introductions around the room. Before, I know you know all of us as staff, but I wanted to introduce Jackie Barton, who is the principal with Birchwood Planning. For those of you who've been on the board for a while, she might be a familiar face because Jackie was the project manager for the original plan almost 15 years ago. And so she now has her own consulting company. So we're really thrilled to work with her. Do you want to say anything else about you and your company? If not, we can do, start with introduction.
I don't need to. I think I just want to say thank you for having me and thank you for trusting me to work with you again. So I'm happy to be here and.
All right, so Carmella, since you are our virtual participant, I want to start with you. So what I'd like the HLRB members to do is just to give your name, how long you've been on the board, and then tell us what your favorite historic building is in Arlington.
You know I want to say the old Stratford Junior High School. I don't know, I have so many, I have so many of them and a couple of them that I really liked are no longer in existence. But first of all, my name is Carmella Hamm. The Dorothy Hamm Middle School is named after my mother. I think the HLRB and the architects and everyone did a fabulous job with marrying the renovations with the new addition. So that's the easiest building for me to think of off the top of my head as being one of my favorites here in the county.
Well, it's an excellent answer. And how, and how long have you been on the HLRB?
Oh, I joined in mid to late 2016, I believe it was. It may have even been early 2017. I know I kind of dragged my feet for a while because I reside full time pretty much in Henrico County, but I own a home in Arlington and I've been back and forth quite a bit for the last 10 years or more doing renovations on the house.
Great, thank you Carmella. Mark, do you want to finish?
Sure, I'm Mark Turnbull. I've been on the board for, if you go 12 or 13 years, I can't really remember. And my favorite historic building in Arlington, that's hard. I think I'll go the easy route, it's not a listed building. But my condo building is the original high-rise in Boston. We were there before anybody else.
Oh, good.
I think we did it better than everybody else, so.
All right. Bob, give you a corner spot.
I'm not really thinking of the last part of this thing yet. First part's easy, but I think I'm coming up with years. Sorry. Favorite building, though?
Nothing.
I probably like.
Jerry?
Yeah, my name's Jerry Laporte and I've been on the HLRB for, I think, a little bit more than 20 years. And did you, I didn't understand what you said, your favorite.
Your favorite historic building in Arlington?
Historic building, okay.
Or a favorite, if you really can.
No, I like. Maybe the. Coffee shop.
Oh, Northside Social?
Northside Social, that might be, I think it's neglected. But I think it really sort of encapsulates the history of Arlington very well.
Thank you.
Dick Woodruff. I've been on the board since 2012 or '11.
Oh, close together after a while, right?
Yes, yeah. And does that have to, the building has to still be around?
No.
No. Because you lost Arlington as well.
Probably not here, man. Oh, yeah, the Beeper Loafer House.
That was your favorite building in Arlington?
I really liked it. But I also liked the Bob Peck showroom. I thought that was great. And then I guess maybe Woodruff.
All right, Amari?
Amari Davis. I've been on the board, I think, six years. That's correct. Favorite built, uh, circle building, probably, I mean, I like the whole sort of ensemble of Rivesman. It's more like the landscape and the way the hill works out and sort of the farm, the farmhouse. It's all kind of a festival in the middle of our county is kind of neat.
You're a landscape guy.
I'm a, I'm an architect, but as I get older, I'm no landscape. I'm more and more important.
And we have so few cultural landscapes left.
Yeah.
I mean, Rivesman is a great example. All right.
Great.
So with that, we have some slides. We're going to walk through kind of our process. We've been working on this, believe it or not, since the beginning of the pandemic, spring of 2020. The bleeding edge of the beginning of the pandemic. Here we are. I know you all have been patiently waiting. We've been giving you updates as best we could, but now we have a draft and we want to be able to share it and learn more about it. All right, so now I'm going to turn it over to Jackie. Do I need to keep this open?
Did you go to screen sharing?
Oh, no, I didn't do that. Okay.
All right, and now we can begin. You should be able to just.
Do we mind if we, can they see the little square that has?
Oh, you can minimize it. I'll minimize it.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and we don't need to talk about introductions. Well, you can see a lovely glorious shot of Chris from there, which I. Okay. So.
But it looks like to everybody else.
Not advanced, you're not sharing.
Okay, we've got a technical issue that goes on the phone. We're going to work on it. I just don't trust myself.
Hey, Serena.
Yeah.
I'm correct, you couldn't see the slides advancing, right? Like you just saw the overshot of like a whole PowerPoint.
Sorry, I'm, I'm.
That's okay, okay. I'm going to try something different.
Hi, it's Lauren. All I see is the, the room with you all.
Okay.
I did see the slide one and slide two earlier.
All right, we stopped sharing for a second.
Yeah, it's weird because it was, let me try it, let me just try it again.
Okay, I see.
What do you see now?
I see the PowerPoint layout.
Yeah. But you can't, okay, because that's, that's what's showing up for us. We're actually advancing the slides, it's not.
Oh, no.
Hold on, I'm going to try PowerPoint live.
I'm glad you know what you're doing.
You don't, do you have a note?
Everybody knows the PowerPoint for this very.
Now it's advancing.
Wonderful, okay.
So everyone in here, sorry, you're going to see the advancing slides at the bottom, but everyone online, you did the way that.
Thank you, Michael. We'll do our best. All right, so again, we're going to kind of skip past our. We can't make this bigger for those of us.
Hit the three dot option.
I present review?
Yeah, let's try that. There we go.
Yeah, okay. All right, let's start again. All right, so just to kind of give a sense of what we're here for tonight and the context for you all. Obviously, the HLRB is really the county's partner in historic preservation. And so you have an important role in the plan. And while you've been getting updates and you've had moments along the way to engage in this, tonight is an opportunity to make sure you're completely familiar with everything that's in the plan. I realize some of you will want some more time, obviously, if you haven't had a chance to read through all of it. So don't feel like if you haven't done that, that when we end the meeting tonight, your moment is over. So don't panic. But you know, we're going to walk through the content together for us to hear some feedback and also for us to share the timeline for approval of the plan. So. So I have Cynthia here, so I'm going to defer to you if there's anything you want to say about this slide. But this is kind of our overall process and timeline. So I'll just, I'll just add, so as I said earlier, you know, we began this at the beginning of the pandemic, so spring of 2020. And the first phase of it that really took us all the way through 2020 into very early 2021 really is what we were calling kind of the data collection phase. It was when Jackie and her team were doing interviews with various stakeholders. I think she spoke to a few HLRB members as part of that. We did an initial online feedback questionnaire to start getting some initial thoughts from the community. We did a virtual kickoff event in November 2020. And then we've been trying to do various outreach via social media as well as an outreach week that we did in 2021, the end of that year. And we've spent a lot of time working on various drafts, which have culminated in the one that was released last week. And back and forth with staff, back and forth with leadership to really kind of refine the document that you see. And then in terms of what's remaining, you know, we're speaking to HLRB this evening. We have a whole bunch of public outreach planned for the spring into middle of summer. And so we, in conjunction with that, we will also have another online feedback opportunity, which is live and available now. So we would encourage you to look at that as you are reviewing the plan. We also are planning to release a few more cultural heritage videos about some of the legacy businesses in the county and the importance of cultural heritage, as well as a story map and some other passive engagement. You might have seen some of our yard signs around the county to attract people's attention and direct people to the website to learn about the plan. And so we plan to come back to the HLRB at the end of the summer, after the end of our engagement, to continue to engage with you all, see what additional questions, comments, concerns you have, and then to really ask for your support to help us champion the final draft from the summer to bring forward to the county board for consideration this fall. So that's, it's been a long process, but we are finally, finally nearing, nearing the end, I hope. And I would just say that we chose the timing for this meeting to be after all those intensive internal reviews of people, like the county manager's office and the planning division. But really before their, this is really just, when we say the draft was released for public review, that was last week. So you all were as early on the calendar as you really could be after the county manager's office released the plan because we wanted you to be first up. This is actually that same timeline. And please don't feel like you have to read this, but if you want a copy of it, Cynthia can make it available. This is that same, another way to look at the process timeline, but really just focused on public engagement. As you know, Arlington County has a strong commitment to public engagement and so this is just focused on that element. And so it's looking at how that falls along with timeline and what the purpose of each of those spaces are. So we won't get into the details of this here beyond what Cynthia's already said, but I wanted you to see that. Before we get into the goals for the current Historic and Cultural Resources Plan, I want for the staff to go through, Cynthia's going to walk through the, an overview of what the plan, what the program accomplished from the 2006 original plan. And that's going to kind of set the stage for how we talk about what we're doing going forward. Great, so in the updated plan, in the introduction chapter, which starts on page 13, there's a lot more detail about this. So in terms of what we've been able to accomplish since the original plan was adopted by the county board in 2006, we were able to accomplish quite a lot. There were three original goals in the original plan. And in terms of some of the things that we were able to achieve that satisfied those goals, a lot of you are familiar because you've seen many of them, but we installed dozens of historic markers all over the county and that's really helped us with our educational and interpretive goals. We've done a lot of historic research on a variety of people and places, as well as created and spearheaded several publications. We were able to complete a multi-phase countywide survey of historic resources that my predecessor's predecessor started, like in the late 1990s. And so we did, I think about 13 or 14 phases of that. So we've done a lot of documentation of historic resources. And after the original plan was approved by the county board in 2006, the leading recommendation from that was to create the Historic Resources Inventory, the HRI. And you are all familiar with that because we use that every day as staff, as does the HLRB when reviewing development projects. So that was a big accomplishment. And we've also updated the preservation sections of the county zoning ordinance. I think it was three times is the total count since 2006. The first time was a major overhaul and the other two times were focused on specific sections and processes. We've also established with the county board's support, 13 new local historic districts around the county, as well as 10 new historic preservation easements that included historic art departments, commercial buildings as well. And in addition, we've really been able to make preservation part of a lot of the county's planning practice on a daily basis. So we interact more with our colleagues. We also are major players now in a lot of the countywide planning studies and the different initiatives that happen. Good examples that include preservation would be the Form Based Code on Columbia Pike. And you all have been reviewing some Columbia Pike projects recently, as well as various like sector and area plans, think of Plandon, Fort Myers Heights, places like that. And then I'd say the last main thing that we've been able to accomplish was really build a lot of our partnerships with different divisions, with different departments in the county, as well as with some of the local community. Because those are some of the things that we've really had success with since the original plan. Do we want to take a moment for our? Yes. So we're just, we did introductions. And so if you could tell us who you are, how long you've been on the board, and if you have a favorite historic building in Arlington, and then you're out of the hot seat.
My name's Katie Myers and I'm very new to the board. I've been on the board since January. And historic building. But I go, I'm going to go with Maywood.
Okay. Good answer.
Good answer.
You know, I don't have a bad playback.
It wasn't Dick's first answer, but. Dick had three answers.
Good three. Well, I have like.
He's the only one that still stands.
I'm Jackie Barton and I'm working on the board. Nice to meet you.
So the last thing that we'll talk about in relation to the original plan in terms of setting context is, you know, the historic preservation program has led the county through a pretty impressive set of accomplishments as a result of that plan. It was a foundation for a lot of the efforts over the last 2006. Do the math.
17 years.
Impressive set of accomplishments. There were some elements that did not get addressed and you can see some of that talked about, like Cynthia said, starting from page 13 in the plan. And when we sat down to do this plan, one of the things that we did was talk a little bit about, okay, what, you know, were there things that didn't get accomplished because they weren't the right things? Or were there other things that sort of impacted that? And we thought it might be helpful to just review what a few of those challenges were. And one of them was just resource, right? But sometimes there's not money, sometimes there's not enough staff time. You know, it's not a surprise for anyone, no matter what sector you're in, sometimes resources just are, run out of things to get it done. Especially, I think, for goals that weren't urgent. And so what you'll find when you look at the discussion of goals that didn't get, objectives, I should say, that didn't get completed, you'll find that maybe objectives like outreach or education objectives tended to be the ones that might have fallen to the bottom of the priority list, not because they weren't as important, but because they tended to be things that didn't have maybe a regulatory issue tied to them or because they didn't have a deadline tied to them in the same way. So they were able to be sort of, or they ended up maybe getting pushed. So something to just sort of think about and have in mind as you move into this next plan. The next thing to think about is sort of how emergent issues relate to all of this in terms of strategy versus emergent issues. So the plan identified mid and long-term strategies that were meant to sort of create success for the preservation program. But when you look at how preservation works anywhere, including in Arlington, the nature of the work means sometimes things emerge that are urgent, right? There are anniversaries that communities are involved in and you may not have anticipated them. Staff needs to be part of them. Or there are demolition threats that come with local designation nominations. There are, the most recent one is not the only one that happened in the last 17 years, right? So things like that happen and those things require all hands on deck. They require maybe sometimes a long lift or a heavy lift. And so those things, even with our own plan, the most recent one that Dick mentioned, we took a hiatus from planning to make room for that because it was really just a busy time for staff and there wasn't a lot of space for planning activities at that time. So same thing happens when you're implementing a plan. And then I think this last one sort of about relationships and structure, we really had this in mind as we went into this plan as well, kind of how the relationships around historic preservation work here in Arlington. Historic preservation is a planning activity. But unlike planning and zoning, well, first, first I would say, before I get into that, there's a lot of public and internal input and review around everything in any jurisdiction, but particularly here in Arlington, that's true. And so that has an impact on timeline things. So I would say that just keeping that in mind is important. There's maybe, what I would say is Arlington has an admirable commitment to engagement and that translates to a significant time commitment. Whenever you're engaging in something, it's going to impact the community. But it also means you've got to sort of factor that in when you're trying to accomplish something. But the second thing is sort of understanding that there are varying levels of priority regarding historic preservation and staff, leadership, commissions, boards, the public, different areas of the community. And preservation hasn't really been structured or formalized equally or clearly across all the counties. So in the way that say, what would I use, maybe affordable housing, what that may put on? Affordable housing is structured in a way that's really clear and maybe consistently across the county. Internally, preservation hasn't been. And so that means that when you've got some things in the plan where you want to see that considered every time a new development is being done or a plan is being done, that isn't really formally structured and so it's variable. And so some of those things that might have been aspirational in the last plan, I think, really were accomplished through the good work of the staff in the HLRB. But in other areas of the county, maybe there wasn't as much preservation considered in certain planning areas because there were other priorities in mind, just, you know, whatever was going on there. Because there wasn't a formalized requirement for that, preservation may not have been the top priority and it may not have been as.
Do you think that then, in terms of past accomplishments, you think the HRI served as sort of one of those organizing principles that does integrate, you know, historic preservation better into planning process? I mean, you know, when you talk about, you know, it doesn't, it's an issue that doesn't rise to the same level of awareness. But the HRI, I think, was intended to make that case.
I think.
Or used as an organizing principle around what's important and what's not.
Yes. So I, I love this question because we've actually had some conversations about this. And since I was here in '06, I actually, like, I think it's really important to keep in mind and feel really good about this. In '06, when this, when the original plan was being created, I think it's important to keep in mind that at that moment, at least my recollection, please jump in and tell me to stop talking if you think this isn't true. That plan was starting from a place where you all were telling me, like developers don't feel trust toward preservationists, preservationists don't feel trust toward developers. We're not starting from the same conversation. We don't feel like we know, I'm paraphrasing, right? But it's like, we don't know when preservationists are going to pop up and tell us something's historic. Or preservationists like, we don't know when they're going to pop up and tell us they're demolishing something and they can't even tell that it's historic, right? Again, I'm paraphrasing. And the HRI was meant to be a tool to begin to address sort of this disconnect. And when, when we all worked together and you all came up with that idea for that tool, there was support for it on both sides. And that, I felt, was really pretty great. Like that was a huge breakthrough. And so I think there should be a lot of pride in that tool. Is it perfect? Nothing's ever perfect, right? As soon as you implement something, you can improve it. But I think that yes, like shortening your question, yes, absolutely. It is absolutely a foundational tool. I think you can build on it and if you, as we go through the plan, you'll see there's like a huge chunk of the regulation or the technology and information goals that are about the HRI that's focused on improving it and expanding it. I, we heard a lot from Arlington staff in particular, but also from folks, some folks in the community who do things like housing from agencies that aren't Arlington County, that said like, I'd like to be able to use this more. I wish that it had a GIS tool that I could tap into that was really high speed. Or I, you know, people had a lot of questions or requests to be able to do more with it. So it wasn't, nobody was saying like, this thing doesn't work or it's not useful. If they had anything to say about it that could be construed as negative, it was that we wish it did more, we wish we had.
More access to it?
More access, more functionality. Some people wanted more clarity of policy. You know, what does it mean to be essential? What does it mean to be important? So we'll dig into that a little more here and when we get to the HRI part. But sort of, I think people wanted to see it be even more applicable, which I think could get at this question of normalizing preservation policy, absolutely.
Does the plan make proposed changes to the HRI in any way?
There are some suggestions for how to make improvements. They're not, the improvements aren't being implemented in this document, but it's setting the stage for how we could make improvements going forward. And I agree with, with everything you said. And we were both here developing the methodology for the HRI and really trying to figure out how to create a planning tool that really allowed the preservation staff to be at the table. Because before that, before we had the HRI, before we had a plan, we were just kind of brought into things as someone.
we were just kind of brought into things as someone fought to bring us in. And so we had no warning, projects had no warning. This is the element. Do you want to join us, Libby?
I'm the ITAC committee.
I'm not sure where they are.
Actually, I think you're still a lot more important than that.
When I told them I'd come, I may have completely got myself, excuse me. It's delightful to see you all, and thank you for making me feel welcome.
Well, you're welcome to come back.
All right.
But it really, I would also say too, in terms of the work that our team does with our colleagues and property owners on redevelopment projects, the HRI really allowed us to have some preservation successes. We were able to use TBRs, we were able to incorporate full and partial preservation, we even secured several easements. And I think having that foundation of the HRI helped us get, get those accomplished.
Yeah, I agree with that. I just, I think it needs to be straightened, as you probably know.
We will get to that.
It does need a way, time, we hear these proposals, they're very quick to wrap into the HRI. Like, it's somehow going to make us feel better type thing, so it's clearly on their minds.
It's being used as the tool of the vision by not just our team.
Can I ask one more question about, not really labor, but the, beyond that, last question. The notion that the one-third important, the top third of important projects are reviewed by HLRB, right?
It's all of the important category.
All of the important, but what is the significance of the top third?
The top third came about after the county board approved the list in 2011 and adopted the HRI goals and policies also in 2011. It was two, three, two or three county managers ago approached us and said, the important category is the biggest. I don't know the number off the top of my head, 140, give or take. And there were a lot of projects coming forward. And he had asked us for a way to figure out which ones in that largest category were a little bit more important. So it was looking at the survey methodology and really kind of figuring out which ones were at the high end of the important list, and that's where the top third came about. So it's still important, it's just a further clarification that it's a little bit closer to essential than being towards the bottom of the important list. So is that, is that helpful?
Yeah, yes, it's definitely helpful.
It's still important, it's not offering any more protection than it, than it would have otherwise. It's just allowed us to look at that largest category a little bit.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it sort of downgraded the other.
Not necessarily.
In a perception sort of sense.
No, I see what you mean, yeah.
Just real quick to follow up. If this is coming up later, until then.
Okay.
We talked about sort of expanding, like, improving the HRI. Does that include updating to include properties that maybe 20 years ago would not have been considered essential, but now would be?
The short answer is, is yes.
Okay.
We'll get to some of that.
Okay, I stopped saying.
Couple of slides, only a couple of slides.
We have more than a couple. Okay. So in addition to looking for, so in addition to sort of thinking about the challenges that we knew existed in implementing the original plan, the other thing that has really been a focus for this update has been equity and accessibility. And there are a couple reasons for this. So I wanted to give you just sort of a, a little bit of a mindset of context around that. One is that, first of all, just generally, and I think all of you probably know this, but I say it out loud anyways, in a post Black Lives Matter world, the public expects organizations and agencies to put their best effort forward to make sure that everyone is getting access to public services. So there's just an expectation on the county that, that you're going to be doing your best to make sure everyone can access services. Specifically to historic preservation. Number two, the preservation movement itself is really in a period of reflection and improvement about this, on these issues. There's sort of a critical awareness that preservation practice wasn't always benefiting or even accessible to all community. You know, preservation started out as a practice that really focused on sort of grand architecture and stories of founders and people who did great things, which often meant wealthy people. And so that wasn't a story about everyone, and it didn't feel accessible to everyone. And that was a long time ago that that, that practice started. And so we're all trying to know better and do better. And that is the context in which this plan has been created. And so, you know, I think that we are in this moment where we really have a chance to think about all the good work that's been done, but also to think about, how do we make sure everyone in Arlington can access the services, the tools, the things that the county has to preserve the stories and the resources that tell the story of Arlington? So that's kind of the context of how we came into this space and why we sort of see the focus that you see. The way that we get at that is several ways. One, you're going to see goals that address these things. So you'll see goals that just directly address that. Two, you're going to know that there are revisions to the statement of significance that encompass a greater diversity of resources and stories than the statement of significance did in 2000. So you'll see more of the people who lived here included. I think that one of the biggest and clearest would be the American Indians that lived here. You know, in 2006, it wasn't surprising for someone to say, we don't have a lot of information. And so then you didn't say a lot. And I think this time, we sort of know in the same age, that's not a great answer, right? So we either dig a little deeper, or we find someone who knows something, or we explain why we don't know more. We've changed the name of the plan. And I, I want to say that the name change itself is not really the point, but I think the language is the point. I think we tried to think a lot about language and looking at the staff, because we had, we had several conversations about language. And I'm glad Serena's one of them, because I feel like she's.
More than several.
Serena, I feel like, is our, is our, like, leader in this. She's always the best of us at catching us when we have, when we can do better at this. But the, interestingly, I don't know how many of you deal with real estate, it's a regular thing, but even the Association of Realtors has removed the word "master" from things like "master bedroom," "master bathroom." It's just, in general, in America, we've been sort of removing words that are inherent to the structure of slavery from, from our public language spaces. If we don't, you know, if we don't need to use it, why would we? And so as we were sort of going through the process of writing the plan in general, we got kind of close, I think, to the end and sort of realized, like, there's this giant word on the front of our plan that even the Realtors Association in America has removed from their vocabulary, but it's on the front of our plan. And so we tried to be thoughtful about language as we went through the plan and just say, like, are there ways that we could talk about things that makes everyone feel welcome and feel like it's a plan for them to read? And so you'll see the name of your plan is, actually, this just got approved last week, so don't think I'm crazy that I have to read it. We're still getting. The Historic and Cultural Resources Plan, which we're really excited about, and we worked with the county manager's office on that. And then one thing we're super excited about is that every goal has an equity aspiration that sort of describes how fulfilling that goal would advance equity and accessibility in Arlington. And so I'd kind of love to see where, if you look at page 48, that's what you'd like to. For goal, "Provide incentives for preservation to residents, property owners, developers, and community organizations," is the goal. The equity aspiration that goes with that says, "Incentives have the potential to encourage broader, more diverse participation in historic preservation services across the county." And so the equity aspirations, what they express is how we believe each goal will help to increase accessibility or equity in terms of preservation across Arlington. What we haven't been able to do yet is express how these are measured. So these aren't perfect, right? We're sort of in early stages, but it's the first plan that's done this, and so it's kind of a, you know, again, doing better as opposed to doing perfect, but we're excited about it. And the staff worked really hard to kind of figure through what these would look like. So I want to give you a minute in case anybody wants to talk about these, because this is a different way, I think.
It's a different approach.
Of doing this, and we're really proud of it. I mean, we, again, we know it's a work in progress, but we're proud of the effort that's been done on it, and a lot of people worked on it. All right, so we're going to spend the rest of the time reviewing goals and objectives. The way we're going to do this is, I'm going to talk a little bit about these myself, but I'm not going to read them to you. So if you want to read them, you have two choices. You want to be reading them verbatim. You can either use the summary that starts on page 38, you know, I've it in front of you, and there's a, like, a quick summary of each goal and objective, and you can follow along, or you can read them on the slide. I have them written out on the slide as sort of summary version. So community engagement goals. In the past, I want to note again, I think when you look at performance in terms of completing things in the past plan, they tended to be the ones that were sort of the hardest for the staff to complete because they were the ones that tended to not have a deadline, or they maybe weren't urgent. But I want to make the case that public support requires understanding, and understanding requires your staff and the HLRB and others to be out there doing engagement. So we're excited about the community engagement goals, and we're really looking forward to those being supported through the next implementation period for this plan. And we also try to think carefully about what's realistic, you know? So you don't see in here that you're launching a community engagement team or a van. You know, there's nothing in here that's, that's sort of a full-scale new program. Michael's here tonight, and she's been doing some things already that's between your quarterly engagements. So I don't know if you want to say anything about that, but.
We're excited to expand the effort more and honestly just to teach people about the different ways that we can sort of and learn more from the community about what they would like to be preserved.
And I think when we talk about accessibility in particular, engagement's really important, because sometimes people don't use, oftentimes, people don't use preservation services because they don't even know we're here. They don't know what's available to them, and they don't know how it works. And I can't tell you how many times in how many communities, people don't even know the difference between maybe the national register or a local district. They don't, they need someone to kind of help them understand what's available to them and what it means. So I think the community engagement part is really foundational to your community being able to engage in preservation. Everybody have a chance to look at those? Jerry, do you want my plan? Can you read up there? Okay.
Yes, yes.
I have mine. I remembered.
All right. Incentives. So this is really interesting. In interviews and focus groups, I, I didn't count, so I can't guarantee this, but I think incentives is probably the thing I heard most often asked for. And I would say not from any, only one group. You know, I would say that ranging from people who had developments, you know, private property owners themselves, to people who worked for the county saying, you're probably going to have to have some financial incentives by the end of preservation, you know, just across the board. And I really think that there was just an understanding that for preservation to be successful in Arlington, there were going to have to be some sort of financial incentive, some sort of incentives for people to, to connect. And really what I think is at the root of that is that when you have a community where there's maybe limited enthusiasm for additional regulatory tools, and there's very high property costs, there's an, there's an increased need for some sort of incentives.
Like a real estate tax, you know, refund or something?
Yeah, so actually, there's a few of these in here. So financial incentives, I think you've got a few things, we've listed a few things. Although if you want to dig, the plan leaves you room, the way it's written, financial incentives. If you come up with other ideas, there's room for you to get more creative. But we talked about, number one, the Historic Preservation Fund, which you've already implemented. Like, I just want to say, it's my happy place. When a plan gets upended before it gets approved, that's, that's pretty hot stuff right there. But tax credits, tax abatements, you know, those are things that we've talked with the manager's office about. Your, your finance office is going to have to work with you on that, but I think. But, you know, there's, but there's room, right? There's room for it, it's still in the document. And I think that, which means that this is something that can be pursued, and other locality has these things. So they're powerful tools, right? Doesn't want to abate their taxes.
Can we talk about other Virginia localities?
There's nothing precluding you from using financial incentives. The Dillon Law sort of dressiness of, you know, being a, being in Virginia. I know that there are a lot of things about being in Virginia that can sometimes hold us back from doing things we might see in other states, but financial incentives are, we got the issues there. In terms of the recognition, we also just talked about recognizing people. I, I love the first one, even though it's probably got a little less, like, firepower than financial incentives, but just recognizing people who are preserving, right? We're always trying to fix a problem, but I think also just the joyfulness of recognizing people who are doing the work. People who are in local historic districts, people who are doing preservation, like, awards programs, plaques, markers, interpretive markers. Like, how does the preservation program engage with those who are already preservationists? And sort of make that a thing that feels good, and makes it feel like a team you want to be on?
No, we used to have a program every year for Historic Preservation.
Preservation Design Awards.
Design Awards, okay, and that program got dropped. And now, but actually, over the years, it got shared with other people.
It was merged.
It got merged, okay? And so it.
Every two years. Now it's, yeah.
Yeah, it got, so the Historic Preservation Department just part, and the, the modern people wanted to recognize new buildings. And so we got shoved, shoved to the side, but there was a category still.
There still is.
But then it got dropped, and now there's another program that they have for, I think it's, I mean, then it got dropped, totally got dropped. Now they brought it back in the last few years, but it's only about modern stuff. All the, all the people who are on the committee that choose, the reason I know that is because I put an addition on my house. A lot of people told me it was really nice, okay? And I submitted it and didn't get any recognition at all, not that I expected to win. And you can get a, and all the, all the things that they gave awards to were the modern buildings. That's all they consider. So, you know, we might try to seek reentry into that program.
Well, we are still part of it. So I think you're referring to Design Arlington. And so when we were, the Preservation Design Awards, like, in the, I forget when it started, maybe around 2000, we were a standalone thing for about a decade.
Right.
And then it got to be too much because it was one major thing that we did annually, and our program started to get involved in more things than we had back then. And so when the Design Arlington Awards program came about, we became a subcategory of that. And I believe the last, I don't know if this is the year that applications are coming out, but it's done every two years instead of every year. And I believe the last award ceremony did honor Dorothy Hen Middle School. So I know that there have been historic projects, have been submitted. The jurors are selected, it's a different group of practicing architects and other design professionals throughout the region. It's a different group that gets selected each time to review the projects. So it, it took a big burden off of us as a program to have to manage that every year, but it's still, the purpose of it is still exists, though, to be able to honor preservation-minded projects too, so.
They don't recognize many. I mean, if you look at the awards, it's all about the modern buildings. I mean, the people, I don't know, they, they change the panel every year.
It is changing.
Yeah, but at least one year I remember it was, I looked at it, and it was all, you know, they were really into modern. And so we could sort of get back into that program a little bit more heavily and get to some people who are interested in preservation.
It's all about the review committee, I think, people on it.
Yeah, or maybe require them to give at least one award for historic, you know, a historically preserved property, and not only just the modern properties.
You know, the issues of, like, rewards and incentives, historic preservation, kind of seems to me that it has to be perspective as an encouragement for people that aren't already protecting their neighborhoods and houses, who are super property owners. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense to do it retroactively for properties that are. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense to do it retroactively for properties that are already protected, I don't think necessarily. I mean, just taking Maywood, for example, the homeowners there bought those houses or owned them when the historic district was created. They don't need an incentive to keep their houses restored because the counties made it a law, basically, that they're restored. And that's what the county needs to do with some other neighborhoods. Maybe if that requires some financial incentives for homeowners, that's maybe it needs to be done. What do you think?
Do you feel like, this is going to be a whole meeting, so, we're going to peek into the rabbit hole, but not like go all the way into it, okay? Do you feel like people who are in the districts now, the locally designated districts now, feel joyful and are proselytizing to other areas of the county that they should become local historic districts?
I think, I think they're kind of joyful about a lot of aspects of it. I don't go to the extent that they would take the time to proselytize. That's taking advocacy.
That's a strong word.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that's, I'm not sure that they would have time or the inclination to advocate.
Advocate.
But I think, I do think that they are, in Maywood, are like very thankful, but it's kind of tear downs, I think, to all over the rest of them, in a lower term.
I think that's the last five or eight years or so, because they've seen what has happened to other racist, dark neighborhoods.
It's not special, yeah.
And, you know, they're all being destroyed, and nothing can be taught, essentially, they're all going to be destroyed.
Right.
Other than Maywood.
So, you have this, wow, I want to pull on you, let's move on. I want to try and take over your meeting with that issue.
Well, I just, I want to say that I think what we heard in the interviews was a lot of resistance to multi, to multi-property, to large multi-property local historic districts. Can I say that? I've already said it, and it's on camera. And so, that felt like maybe...
Were these true homeowners, or...
Generally. I mean, I didn't hear, I don't think I heard a single person, I'm trying to think if I heard anybody other than like us insiders, right, HGLRb members or staff, say, "We really need more local historic districts." And they can start districts. So, that made, that kind of brought us to this conversation about like, how do we get those who are, how do we kind of get more cachet around this idea of being designated? Because that is really the gold standard, right? We can, investments in local districts are really where protection lies.
Right, no, I agree with you. That's where the incentives and the rewards ought to go.
And can I ask, and you might not know the answer to this, but the resistance you're seeing in Arlington, is that resistance is also found, I'm thinking specifically in the District of Alexandria, similar jurisdictions?
I can't speak to the District of Alexandria, but I've seen it in other jurisdictions. Generally...
Because I know there are places that have that, I was just wondering if our two equivalent sisters, same resistance as it is here. My theory is no.
I think a lot of what we've heard, you know, over the years at staff, is that there's a lot of transitory people, there's a lot of people who have been here for decades and generations, don't get me wrong. But I think there's also this misconception by general population that because Arlington's history feels more modern, a lot of it developed in the 20th century, that's not really historic because it's too new. It's not from an older time period. A lot of our, our history was, you know, shaped by transportation history, was shaped by development history, federal government history. So, we have, and yes, a lot of that happened within recent decades, and I think to a lot of people, that doesn't equate to something either historic or necessarily worth keeping because it feels too recent.
Right. I often wonder if people who are interested in that historic aspect, when they move into the area, if they don't subconsciously choose the other two jurisdictions over us for that reason. That's a whole other philosophical...
That'd be a great study.
You know, one of the ironic things is that there's been a lot of local opposition to what used to be called Missing Middle, and a lot of those people who oppose it say that they want to save their neighborhoods. And that's why they moved here, and this is going to destroy their neighborhoods. And at the same time, they could use historic preservation as a tool to save their neighborhoods. And from what you say, people don't understand that they could use historic preservation to save their neighborhoods, and somehow, our goal should be to link some of these people that want to save neighborhoods to historic preservation.
I would agree. And I do want to say, I didn't do a survey, so I want to waive my, I don't have data, right? I didn't do a comprehensive survey of the county or anything like that, but just, yeah. So, I do want to acknowledge that. I could be wrong, right, Dick? I like, if you did a whole county survey, maybe, but I don't think I'm terribly wrong based on what staff have experienced in terms of their most, you know, your experiences in trying to pursue their neighborhood districts that are more recent.
I think there's a lot of misinformation out there about what a historic district means to an individual property owner.
Yeah.
You know, and you do give up a basket of rights that normally you would have as a property owner, but then you get some...
But you gain so much, too.
You gain rights and benefits. And I think there's a, there's a certain amount of education that needs to be done, really concerted education and advocacy on why it makes sense in this context.
Before we go on, Serena, I see you patiently had your hand up. Thank you.
Oh, well, thank you. I just was thinking, as someone who's been now a district of Columbia resident for five years, and has been involved in these conversations, I am seeing them here in DC as well because, largely because, I mean, I think they're caged in conversations about affordable housing and sustainability, which as someone who believes those things are harmonious with historic preservation or not, actually, like those conversations don't hold water. But certainly, with the house prices, the way they have been over the last, well, basically since the housing bubble, a lot of people are very reluctant to put any kind of restriction on how much their properties can appreciate. And so, coupling that with the developers then getting those properties and saying, "Oh, well, affordable housing and sustainability," I'm seeing far fewer historic districts being designated and far more neighbors objecting. And also, I think a lot of people have been burned with extremely limiting HOAs, and they see a comparison between HOAs and the local historic district system.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The partnerships. Partnership goals cover a lot. The first two slides really address something we referred to in the challenges section from the first plan, from the original plan, which is sort of the ad hoc nature in which historic preservation is integrated into other departments and divisions. And again, I want to say, as I talk about these things, I hope you hear it's matter of fact, this is not a criticism, it's just, like, everything happens on a continuum, right? Everything happens on a continuum of improvement over time. And I want to acknowledge that, I think, one thing I heard in interviews over and over again was how much people respect the current HPP staff, and how much they enjoy working with them. And I think that one of the things that I observe is that the ways in which preservation has made advancements in terms of being integrated into other divisions and departments is a lot of credit to your current preservation staff. But it is, I want to say again, not formal. So, for the most part, it is because this staff has built relationships, because they have made themselves a resource, because they've reached out and made these connections. And so, it's because so-and-so over here finds Serena to be a great resource, and so they call her when they have a question about history and culture in the parks, and so then they're consulting with her about that. It's not because there's something that says that when a historic building in the parks is going to be restored or rehabbed, that preservation needs to be brought to the table. And so, if she were to leave, would they still be doing that? And, you know, I'm just making, using that of other people. So, they probably would, but if everybody's here, but if everyone leaves, and if everyone leaves and gets replaced, we don't know, right? And so, these goals and objectives in these two slides are really about creating actions that will create structure for historic preservation to be built into the county. You know, we want those structures to be there so that no matter if you have a brand-new program manager, that those connections are still there, right? That they're required, because then those relationships will be built again. Relationships are absolutely essential, and they're wonderful, but the work cannot be built only on relationships. It also has to be built in the structure.
It's interesting, though, that the partnerships all seem to be completely government-focused.
These two slides are...
I mean, what about all the various nonprofits that exist that could conceivably be partners in the center, or new partners that are nonprofits or whoever? Was there any consideration of...
You're thinking like of history nonprofits, that sort of thing?
Yeah.
Like the 2006 plan talks about? We did not spend too much time on that this time around. I don't know if you want to talk about that a lot or not. I think the first thing, you know, that comes to mind in reaction to that is, you know, we do have a very strong internal partnership network, as I mentioned before. And our experience in working with external partners over the years is everyone, a lot of times, everyone's very focused on their specific project, their specific mission, and it's been a bit more challenging to kind of cross-collaborate, cross-pollinate. So, I think in terms of partnership goals for the new plan, it's being able to broaden beyond just those internal partnerships, you know? And I think some of the community reaction we've seen so far already with the Historic Preservation Fund, there are some really interesting groups out there, some of whom we've never encountered before, who have really creative ideas...
That's great.
...of how to merge history and preservation with their mission. And so, I think through these new programs and incentives like the fund, we're going to be able to broaden our reach and also build some of those external partnerships.
That's great. And don't get me wrong, I completely agree on this whole notion of the importance of the staff. You guys are sort of ratio with the bridge as far as I'm concerned, when it comes to the rest of the county, so...
We appreciate it. We're doing our best with what we have. I think that in some communities, you see sort of a split in the preservation work, and there's a partnership situation where there's almost like, there's a, you know, there might be a couple of nonprofits that are taking some of this local jurisdictional preservation work, and they're handling it in a way that's really almost, like, if you took a pie chart of what the HPP staff does, you might see some section of what they do parsed out to what would be a nonprofit in other communities. And, you know, I can say that even in my own community in Columbus, Ohio, like, the neighborhood level, like, the German Village Society's a nonprofit, and they handle a lot of the sort of historical markers and some of the outreach activities and the engagement that you all do, for example. And I think here in Arlington, part of why you're not seeing a lot of that in this plan is that we put some of that in the first plan, but that's not really how the implementation effectively rolled out. I think that, in reality, the implementation of the first plan did fall on the staff. And you do have strong nonprofits here in Arlington, and I think maybe the implementation of this plan will reveal some new opportunities, but in terms of some of the challenges that we identified as priority, we didn't see a clear nonprofit partner that would take the lead on that, at least at this point. Which, again, is not to say that there aren't, there certainly are strong, great nonprofits here in Arlington, but there wasn't maybe the right nonprofit to take those initiatives on as they're prepared.
So, I am looking at our plan, see a lot of the cross-pollination with the partnership goal, and then also the community engagement goal. Because I think in doing a lot more community engagement, that's where we can try to foster some more of those partnerships. So, they kind of work hand-in-hand in some regard, and I know that that's one of my goals for the program, is in doing more outreach and more education. We'll find more potential partners, more ways to understand and expand our understanding of cultural heritage in Arlington, for example. So, at least from the community engagement perspective, that's definitely a goal of mine.
I was going to wait until later to raise this, because we're talking about external partners. A concern I've had for a while, it's a minor concern, and I don't know how we address it with this, but it's primarily private sector partners, when we've had oftentimes redevelopments of properties, and they have said, "Well, we're going to protect this X item in the lobby or on the facade, and then we're going to just tear down the rest." Or, "We're going to erect a historic marker." And there's this open question of, "Well, who's going to maintain the historic marker? What happens when it starts looking bad because we, as a county, don't actually own it? What are they going to do to preserve it? What happens when they sell the building?" And I don't know that we've ever figured out how this kind of proffered assistance in preservation for some of these developers has ever really been solved. It's kind of like, "Well, we're just going to cross our fingers and hope for 10 years that marker doesn't fall off the building." So, I don't know, I just, I don't think this is the place to talk about that, but it's something that every time we get a private redevelopment, it does a marker, I expect.
That's a great question. Are you a lawyer?
I took legal training, but no, I did not...
The short answer is no.
Not one of them.
I asked that in a positive manner.
Yeah, no, no, working for Congress told me I did want to be a lawyer.
Well, you know, state historic preservation offices work in what they call mitigation, you know, when they do that, when something has an adverse effect on a site, and then the adversely affected site can receive mitigation, which is ideally when they agree to not adversely affect the site, but if that's not an option, they can do any number of things, like you were saying, like markers or education efforts, but sometimes it's money, or sometimes it's a combination of those things. And I would just say, in relation to this conversation, that if you're accepting things like markers and exhibits or installations, you should be accepting maintenance funds along with those. I think that too often, as preservationists, we let ourselves be the redheaded stepchild, you know, we let ourselves sort of, I shouldn't use that phrase probably.
As a redhead, I take no offense. Or which left of my redhead?
Two redheads.
Right, and then ginger's fabulous. I don't know actually where that phrase came from.
We'll leave it out.
Yeah, so anyhow, we should, I think that we let ourselves be lesser-than, like, we let ourselves think we're lesser-than, right? And think like, "Oh, we're just going to wring our hands and like, ask you to give us this little tiny bit of something after we destroy something." And if the thing that they're making is of value to them enough, then we can ask for a reasonable mitigation for that. And so, I would just argue that maybe going forward, there would be a more comprehensive look at that. Maybe the preservation fund is where those things go, now that you have a tool, that's your place to put it.
And perhaps beyond just maintenance funds, but in some cases, these properties won't be sold for a long time. You've had nonprofits, like, I'm thinking like Appa buys things, and they offer things. But in other cases, it really is a private company who may pass it off to another management company 10 years down the road, not just the funds, but, I hate to use the term controlling authority, but somebody who's going to be keeping an eye on it even after somebody else has purchased that multifamily building that sits on top of the...
You create clarity about the stewardship of the resource. Because what you're doing is you're creating a cultural resource, both whether it's, you know, is it going to become something else that's lost? It's a great question.
I'm really glad you brought that up, and that's setting off some really great ideas. And I think that, getting it back to partnerships, especially internal partnerships, I think that, that, you know, we have good partnership with planning, we have a great partnership with the county attorney's office, strengthening these site plan conditions for some of these private property owners is a key way to have those requirements put in there and kind of expand what our expectations are. And I think that because we are getting more and more creative, or we're getting what we're going to get with some of the, you know, what is historic preservation with some of these, some we've been happy with, some we have not, I think that we're going to get to a point, if we aren't already, trying to come up with an inventory, not like the historic resources inventory, but some type of list where we have to keep track of all of it. Same way that we're doing with markers, it's going to be ways that we've incorporated historic characteristics into a new building, if it is something like an exhibit, if it's a model of a building that had to come down, we're going to have to keep holding that. a model of a building that had to come down, we're going to have to keep holding that to that property owner and manager. And we kind of have been broaching that with the county attorney's office, but it's, but because we're all like, well, that's 40 years down the road, that's 20 years down the road. We know that that's going to come around us, but that's eventually what we're going to have.
The one that springs to mind to me, even though it's not, because it's nonprofit, I'm not as concerned that they're going to suddenly sell it, but Arlington Presbyterian Church, Tony Pike, they talked about historic marker, they preserved some of the stone, all these historic elements, and that's what got me thinking about these other projects.
And that was the mitigation years ago for the loss of the historic church.
Right, and it's more like the long-term, how do you keep tabs and controlling it? Not just them.
Good point.
I've thought about this, especially in terms of the historic markers that we've been using in the last 20 years or so, because like if you go down WNOB trail, they put those historic, they last upon 10 years, okay? And after 10...
They have a shelf light, yes.
They have a shelf light, much shorter shelf lights than the, you know, the typical steel, iron, whatever historic markers that we used to have. So it seems to me if we include one of those, we could have some, if with our fund that we have now, we could have something like, what, when you buy a grave in a modern cemetery, you have to make a contribution to what they call perpetual care. Okay, so if we could have a fund within our fund, that, you know, they're saying, okay, we're giving the marker, then we're giving X dollars to take care of it in perpetuity. And you can make those calculations and so it's a...
Great ideas. Thank you.
So looking at cultural landscapes, this really looks at places that are defined by their association with historical person group, event or activity. And it really, right now, this goal, the objectives under it focus on two things. The goal leaves you room to expand if other things come up, you know, the plan is a living document. But right now, the two objectives that are really of note, probably feel maybe a little bit separate from one another, but they come from two different priority areas. One is looking at cemeteries and burial grounds, and I think that's just, some of you may know this, but there have been some things that have happened here in the county around cemeteries and burial grounds. And there are just some questions around, what do we do about historic cemeteries here in Arlington? What do we do about abandoned cemeteries? So somebody owns them, but they don't live here.
There's supposed to be a report.
There was an internal memo.
Now, there was discussion.
And there was a memo.
The discussion, it wasn't a public...
I didn't see that memo.
It wasn't public, but that is part of the discussion that the county board has been providing our professional...
It's interesting that it wasn't public because a request came from...
But that was associated with site plan. Now I'm blanking out which site plan it was.
Yeah, it was the...
I just, I'm going to offer this, and I offered this in this planning space, too.
Okay. I take that back. I oversee the case because we didn't actually request plan. I think the plan was sort of for its compromise, you know, not wanting to do anything involved cemetery at that time, but instead have a sort of plan developed about what to do about cemeteries.
So we're offering some suggestions as part of this updated plan that could help us further investigate what to do about those places.
And part of that is also because this is, again, since it has been a conversation that the county board has had in the past, recently, they were hoping to also some type of guidance mentioned in the plan.
More recently than...
Well, that was probably one of the first memos I have, right?
Was the non-public report ever like...
It was, that was, that was, again, it wasn't made public, but that was one of those things where the county board recognized that there needed to be, they needed to start figuring out something. And they didn't have enough information, I think, that they felt during that time when that was all figured out. So that is why this is one of those odd things that we were like, hey, Jackie, guess what? We need to, we need to address this, something you brought up.
I'm going to acknowledge that when I, when we started on this plan, this was one of the first things that I feel that the county, without naming who, right, in interviews and in discussions with different people, there were a couple of people that said like, put this, you know, fix this and put it in the plan, tell us what to do about cemetery. And I think that, I will just say, and then we'll move on, because you all are going to have some work to do if you really want to tackle this, this is a difficult conversation. We don't have a lawyer in the world, but if you did, they would tell you. It's a difficult conversation because we're talking about other people's property in a world where we all have finite plans and resources. So ultimately, you all will have to have a conversation where you decide, where the county decides what they want to invest in either acquiring property, cemetery, or invest in taking care of property that they don't own. So that does not mean you shouldn't, right? I'm not should or shouldn't leave you, but I'm just laying out that I think one of the first, this is an issue everywhere, right? Cemeteries, sex with history. So I think that there's an exercise to be done in terms of sort of like, are there deal breaker cemeteries that have like graves or they're in locations that are just so important that you're just going to suck it up and it doesn't matter? But there are always going to, there are always going to be cemeteries that are owned by people or their own land where people aren't taking care of them. If you try to take care of all of them, it will be a giant financial hole if you're taking care of someone else's property. I think that it's just a conversation that requires a little bit of, I want to say this. I think when you first put it on the table, it seems like, yeah, we're going to do something about this. And then when you start digging into it, it gets really complic, it gets really complicated really fast, especially when you've got multiple, it sounds like you don't have multiple sites, but you're dealing with, so each one has its own set of complications. So I'm not waving you off, but I am explaining why you don't have a solution plan. That's a whole plan in and of itself, so.
And you'd like a goal.
And you'd like to have a lawyer involved. And I'm not a lawyer.
We were, we did the...
Well, I'm a lawyer. I don't know anything about cemetery.
Oh, there's lawyers.
Yeah.
Excellent.
We know everything about every law.
But you can probably gather, since you're a lawyer, more than I, why you might want to be cautious about jumping into...
Well, yeah, but I don't understand really why it's like, in any given development, any door near the sort of building we want to preserve or, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't actually know why it needs...
I don't know if it needs a plan, but I think it needs a...
You deal with cemeteries this way.
It needs some strategy with human remains.
Yeah, right. But so, I mean, you can't dig those up, obviously, so.
Well, you can, you can dig them up, but you can relocate them. That hasn't been done in Arlington County.
But then when you start getting down into the administrative aspect of who even owns this property, private property that has family graves, that there hasn't been a burial there for a while, but gets put down at the bottom of, I think, the list of priorities that the county might have. And I can, I'm happy, I'm even going to say that because I think that there's many other things that people are trying to figure out, well, do we want to spend $250,000 of going through the process of just having the county able to make a decision about this property? You don't even know what that decision is. It starts to get, that's where the challenging aspect of that goal can be. But it doesn't mean it isn't going to, but we wanted to specifically call it out in the plan.
And the cha, I think where it does get much, where it gets more complicated, I won't say much, but more complicated is the human remains aspect of it. And those can, can shift depending on how old it is versus whether you have newer burials, et cetera, et cetera. It's just, again, it doesn't mean you can't address it. There are jurisdictions that have, it's just a little more complicated than just like knocking out some recommendations and...
Well, not to belabor it, but I think the county board made a lot more complicated than it needed to be because really the issue at hand was the whole family cemetery and what to do about it, when it was going to be completely surrounded by three brand-new developments and whether there was a chance to proffer with those three developers some way of, it was already, it's already protected, historic history, of some way of making it at least protect with a fence, mow the lawn, you know, that kind of thing? It wasn't that complicated. It was not that complicated.
That's almost a policy question.
Yeah, aren't all of these part of policy questions essentially? I mean, but this was, this was one that became all about all the cemeteries in Arlington, which I have no idea how many there are. How many are there?
Ones that we don't know.
I was asked about.
None of which, to my knowledge, are being threatened by imminent development.
I guess I don't know, yeah.
Or have an opportunity to proffer.
I agree, I don't know how big it is.
Well, I guess that's even how, yeah, ask us about it.
Yeah.
Is this a big...
I did, I asked that question.
We did, we're like, well, we do need to talk about it. We do need to talk about it. We don't want it, because eventually it's always going to be something we don't have a solution for every time it comes up. And it will, it will eventually.
Even in this case, as Dick was saying, we thought it was an ideal situation to solve this, you know, because you have three developers who have deep pockets.
And the YMCA is like practically volunteering.
Yeah, and so, at least in that instance, they were, you don't, I mean, you wouldn't necessarily be setting a precedent for anyone else, but they, it's just not a high enough priority on the county board's, that's our problem, is they don't really think this stuff is very...
Well, having it in the plan, though, does help elevate it to an extent. So it's not completely forgotten at the bottom, bottom of the pile.
Was this the site plan review that preservation wasn't at the table?
No, we were, we were up the table, but there were multiple site plans happening, kind of one after the other, and there was concern about, well, kind of the physical appearance of the cemetery and then whose responsibility is it if you're going to build this new high-rise and people are going to look out and, you know, all the stones are falling over. But we don't own it, it's a private cemetery that the county does not own, nor do we have the right to maintain it. And it just became kind of an issue during those multiple site plans that happened back-to-back-to-back. And so it's definitely a concern, and it's not just cemeteries, it's cultural landscapes generally, but cemeteries, you know, we, we realize that there is a need to start thinking about solutions, which is why we've come up with a goal and some actions.
The other specific spaces that are called out is really looking at county parks and other publicly owned spaces. Those are the two cultural landscapes that are specifically addressed. There is a really great relationship right now between the preservation program and county parks, but we're always looking to expand, obviously. All right, here we go. Now, it's exciting. So, regulation goals apply to the foundational work of the preservation program, and this first goal instead of objectives is the most likely one to impact the HALRB directive. So it addresses the designation process. So these three objectives are really about looking at the designation process and ensuring that it's working as well as it can. And what I think I want to say is just that it has happened that some of the designation cases that we have seen have tried our system here, right, they've put some pressure on the system, especially contentious cases. And ideally, designation would kind of work along a similar process, not that we would have a guaranteed outcome every time, right? We don't guarantee that when something's nominated that it gets designated, but that it would work along a similar process, that nomination, review, staff review and documentation, public input, HALRB review and recommendation, county board decision, that there would be some alignment along that process. And that if, if staff review shows us that something meets a set of criteria, HALRB recommendation, if all those things are aligned, that it would point to a certain outcome, and that outcome, you know, again, you don't guarantee a perfect linear process, but the, there would be some comfort and surety. Some continuity, some comfort and surety to some extent in that process. And when those steps start to look like they're out of line from one another, especially, like I said, I think what we've seen historically since 2006 or even before, that when things are contentious, that, that process is not always in alignment, actually typically isn't in a contentious process. We just thought, what these reflect is that it's a good idea to review the process, to review the legal structure, and also to review what sort of training our teams have to make sure that we're following all those structures. So this is really, again, about, it's, we're sort of in the step between, we've recognized like, maybe the designation process needs some tuning, but we don't necessarily know exactly the details of that tuning. So this is, this stops short of saying we're going to do this, this, and this, but we're saying, maybe we need to do some work on this because we know we've had some cases where we're not in alignment, where there is contention, not just public to the county, but even here within our sort of process. So we want to make sure that it's working. We want to make sure the county is following along at all footsteps in our guidelines and our enabling legislation, that we're following those to the T. We want to make sure that there's some alignment between the HALRB's understanding of those and the county board's understanding of those, that we're not understanding those the same way. Why is that? Why, why would one of those bodies think that the answer is yes and the other no, or vice versa? If that's happening, let's figure that out. And then, once we've got that kind of figured out, the last thing is, this thing about legislative changes, we think there's maybe some room, you know, we hear a lot about Virginia and how you're handcuffed in Virginia, and we did some communicating with other jurisdictions in Virginia as well. And we think this one is a, you know, this one is a little bit of a...
Further reach.
Longer term.
Longer term.
But we think there is some room to work with other jurisdictions in Virginia and figure out kind of how our process here can align with best practice from other jurisdictions around the country, but to do that officially, right? To go to the state legislature and say, this is how it's done elsewhere in the country, get that we're a Dillon Law state, right? So we want to make sure that we follow Dillon rule and we, so can we kind of, we look at how that happens. In other states, typically, the commissions actually make this designation for them. That might be something that you all consider when you go through this process. I don't know if that'll end up being very far or not, but there are things that you might, as you go through this process, kind of figure out, and as you do that, what might you want to change so that this process works a little better going forward.
So you're asking, I think probably you'd get agreement around the table that we ought to look at the process, but are you asking for specific suggestions now to put in, or just is that just a...
Well, we've already gotten some good ideas so far on other things. There's no reason why you couldn't pitch it for an idea.
I think you could definitely share ideas, and that's the point, you know, the plan has been available for a week. We are going to have it available for the next several months, and we want to be able to bring to the county board this fall something that acknowledges a lot of this great input that we're hearing from you and that we're going to hear from the community over these next few months. So this is an opportunity to kind of share some of those ideas now, but also, you know, between now and the fall, we can continue this conversation. This is not the only time that we can talk about it.
Well, if you're looking for specific suggestions, one, I think, is that you shouldn't allow one individual person, you don't even have to be citizens, our lawyer to start the process going, okay? In fact, we changed our rules, I think, changed the ordinance with respect to multifamily properties.
Multifamily properties, yes.
But we didn't change it with, and there you have to have some kind of a group, I don't know, extended or something like that, or you have to have the agreement.
25% I think of the...
Yeah, okay, but for an individual property, all you need is one person to start, and then we've also been told by the staff that we almost, and in some instances, we almost have, don't have any discretion as to if it meets these requirements, you have to vote yes, okay? So this puts developers kind of into a black hole. And so that's, you know, one reason, I think, where, not a recent past, but you have people tearing things down so they don't have to deal, you know, and/or there's so much uncertainty by just having one citizen start the process. They're anxious to get it over with rather than negotiate and go into a black hole. So I mean, a minimum, I think you'd have to have more people to file an application. I don't know, I mean, even to like, it's more like getting on the ballot for an election.
You want to see the, you want to see the...
You have to have a petition of X, I don't know what the number would be.
You want to see the way that the nomination gets filed be a...
You want to see the way that the nomination gets filed be a little, have a little bit higher bar?
Yes, precisely.
So that there's
I don't know exactly what that bar is, but, and also, make it more apparent that there's room for negotiation than, you know, it's just going to be, they won't be able to do, that's partially the problem with, you know, what Dick was talking about, our reputation or people don't, misunderstanding the process, okay? That they just, even, you know, sophisticated developers think, oh, I don't want to get involved in that, you know? When, you know, they, there's a lot of examples, especially in DC, of where they've taken adaptive reuse and building and stuff like that.
It's a collaboration.
It's more a collaboration thing, okay? So, and I don't know exactly how you do that, but.
Well, so, I would go on the opposite end, though, and say, I mean, if you have the demolition delay ordinance, like, that's where the real negotiation usually takes place, which is kind of a, you know, I guess more, you know, yeah.
Sick.
More sick. But, so I come from Denver, I worked in the preservation role there, and we had a pretty strong demolition delay ordinance. They even beefed it up. I think it was like ten days. And it was pretty, they did add, like, instead of one person. So they, they did kind of add to that, but, you know, anyone can, can stay at a demolition and then their historic preservation board makes a decision. But they do, their, their city board does have the final say. So it is a two-step process, but, so the ten-day review is for the historic preservation board, I believe. And then if they vote yes, it meets all these criteria, which is, you know, pretty much yes or no. Then it goes on to the city council and they have the final decision. And I don't think they necessarily have to say yes or no. They could have a board member say, you know, I never believe in, you know, these designations that go on that board, so I'm never going to vote yes for those. So, but, that demolition delay, so I worked with a group called Historic Denver, which was a nonprofit. That's where we were really able to go in and negotiate with developers about adaptive reuse. And, look, you can still develop this property, but there's a lot of exciting ways to do it where you keep where you recorders of the historic facade and build your apartment building high there, that kind of thing.
Yeah, that's exactly right. There's actually legislation to that effect pending. It was introduced last year and then again this year, voted Virginia House and Senate.
Was it this year? Because I didn't see it on listing. Maybe I didn't get it listed.
I think it was, I think it was.
It was kind of a pull, wasn't it?
Yeah, I felt like it was last year and then it kind of got stalled, but I didn't hear anything about it this second call.
I thought it was introduced again in the Senate at least.
I could be wrong, I, I just, I remember here.
And this is the kind of stuff we talk about legislative change.
I mean, the, I don't, you know, I respectfully, I disagree a little bit, Jerry. I don't think the problem is that one person making a designation, HLRB can act on that rapidly and deny that request. It has no merit. That's what should happen if there's no merit. What happened in previous case recently here is that when the HLRB acted, the HLRB found that the property didn't warrant protection, but a demolition permit had already been filed. The county found its hands tied and kind of went along with the plan to protect it. But it was, it was like on a legal course of action that couldn't be stopped because of the whole, you know, Dillon State situation where Virginia, you know, the county didn't have the authority, the blocks of administrative demolition action. Problem wasn't just that one person made the nomination, it was a worthy nomination.
I think that kind of points out how there's, we, we need to have a collective conversation to figure out what would be a way to strengthen and improve the designation process. And maybe it isn't so much as having to improve the designation process, maybe it's other tools that need to be developed in order to coincide with it well. And so, that's where I think we're kind of like, we want to make sure that that's something that is on our radar, that we can work on that and that we have support from the public and the county board also. I can't see how they wouldn't think, yes, there is definitely room for improvement because they see it as Yeah, 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 so, because they felt that their hands were tied too, how quickly they could.
Well, that's, surprises me that the county wasn't supportive of the legislation when it was happening. Because their hands were tied by that Dillon rule provision or whatever it is.
Well, I think with, with going down to Richmond, I think that that's, again, one of those things where it's kind of like, we, it always kind of, we kind of learn about the legislation, we know when it's being introduced, most of the time we're allowed to provide comments to it. But again, we've got these ten other things we're focusing on. And that is a long game, that's a long game to improve it. But we, I think the way that Jackie framed it is, maybe it's creating partnerships with our neighbors to be able to go down to Richmond and really say, look, we've had, we've been having these discussions, we've created those partnerships. We know that this would work better for us in Northern Virginia. And so, or not even focusing just on Northern Virginia, other jurisdictions in Virginia. I think that would make that even more important to try and not just be Northern Virginia. We're a stepchild of Virginia.
You know, on that subject, so I think, I mean, I think legislative changes are great and I think that medium-term, those are changes that will happen, safe. And there are ways to include more jurisdictions, but it also reminds me of, five years ago, maybe six years ago, there was a piece of legislation enacted that specifically said, no jurisdiction with a county manager form of government shall do X. Well, there are six optional forms of government in the Commonwealth. There's only one that has chosen the county manager form of government, that's us.
Yeah.
So it was a way of saying, screw Arlington, without mentioning Arlington in the legislation. In effect, fair fact is Prince William is using Urban County Executive. So even doing that to a way that would accommodate the whole state, there's nothing to stop them from saying, that form of government, as long as we're dealing with using it. Short of us incorporating the city or switching to Urban County Executive, we're always that one in charge.
Well, that's more
I know, I understand, like, that's like a whole other thing, though.
Those are the challenges, those are the challenges to it.
We did some, I forget, maybe Cynthia remembers, we did something, someone didn't like it, they got a friend in Richmond specifically.
It was the HRI.
HRI.
Yeah, something to do with that.
Oh, right.
This was pretty early.
Why didn't you talk about that?
I'm talking about it, I can't remember everything anymore.
It was a long time ago, it was, I can't remember it.
But I don't think it's, I don't think it's in the legislation anymore.
Okay.
It was a, it was a reaction to, there was a, I think, a fear of property rights being taken away, even though when the county board adopted the list of policies, it was clear that this was a tool. This was not an overlay, this was not a protection of any kind. It was a, it was a planning guide. And that, that's all that I recall hearing.
That's kind of what I remember too.
The HRI got some Richmond's attention and they passed it.
Somehow.
Well, somebody was affected by the HRI and friend in Richmond, that's how it got Richmond.
Well, they were friends.
And the Republicans were in charge, for sure.
So, to switch gears for a second, I, I think the one, two quick points I want to make this before we go on. I think some of the contentious designation requests that have happened, especially within the past few years of working on this plan, I think it was the ideal time for those to have occurred to really kind of make us take a step back. Okay, well, what is the silver lining? What is the lesson learned from that? What are ways that we can, like the theme of the night, is improve upon what we have? And so I think that is where we're going with these two goals and objectives, is to really think about, how do we make change going forward? And the second point I want to make is that the role that this body has as the preservation commission, to be able to work with us and to be able to talk to county leadership about those, whether it's process changes, legislation changes, whether it's coming up with new tools, that we need to rely on you all, you know, as the preservation commission, to really kind of speak up on, on these issues. Because you are helping shape, you know, preservation policy just as much as we are at the staff level, especially when it comes to designations. So just kind of keep that in mind, that this is, this is an area where we're going to really need to work together, the staff and the commission.
Especially when you bring experience from Haiti, you were talking about how it worked in Denver and how you were able to use demolition delay effectively with developers. Like, I think being able to talk about those things is really powerful.
And they just had a big, big win there as well for preservation. The property that they have filed demolition for in the county, the county there, the city approved the designation, gets the owner's wishes. That's beautiful. The other, are we on, are we on the, like, the incentive tools too in the regulations? Yeah, increase in flexibility of how we use the preservation tools, is that the same? That's the last one?
Which slide are you on?
Oh, wait, you're in I think maybe I jumped one ahead.
H forty, yeah.
Yes, yes. I was just going to go to the next one, so I think you're, go ahead, because I think we're going to the next. I was going to say that the next, the next regulation of goals and objectives are really about, is this the one?
Oh, good.
I think it's the one I'll do. Okay. Well, the next ones are actually about using regulatory tools in more flexible ways to make them more accessible and effective. And so, this one, you see objectives that are actually about, the second one, micro districts, is really just using the local historic district, but in a way, we haven't really used it to date, which is instead of just a large multi-resource district or an individual building, thinking about small multi-resource districts, so.
Enclaves.
Enclaves, in the best possible way, you know, can we, instead of trying to get the whole neighborhood of Cherrydale, is there a block in Cherrydale where people are super excited about their neighborhood and the character there? So, you know, we've talked about, maybe there's not quite the appetite that there was twenty years ago for designation overall in the county, but there still is, as Jerry was talking about, people, there's still people who are really wanting to see the character of their neighborhood preserved. And the idea of these micro districts might be something to build on. So we find these pockets, if you will, these micro districts, start to build on that. And people can then see the impact of local designation. We don't have to go high and go, or go home, right? We can, we can
That's a great idea.
The other is sort of this idea of, you guys have worked with Columbia Pike. So, not exactly like Columbia Pike, but thinking a little bit about this idea, we call them neighborhood heritage districts. Thinking about using the local district overlay, but, but the guidelines would be more about scale, rhythm, materials. What it would really do is create an environment in which you wouldn't be seeing, you're not so micro-focused on things like windows or, you know, wouldn't be micro-focused so much on materials, but it would be focused on detail materials, but it would be focused on sort of maybe pulled back a little bit. And so this might work in places where there isn't so much fine detailing, but where like the rhythm and scale is important, where the story's really important.
The cultural value.
Because the cultural value is important. And this gets back to sort of opening preservation up to places and people that haven't, usually more, really been connected, and so.
Garden City.
All sorts of places.
I mean, we talked about the street where Freddy's is, right? It's a place that has a really important story, but how does that fit into a local historic district when you're talking about like pristine
Restaurant Row, you know, Crystal City, traditionally all single-family homes that have been transformed into commercial uses, lots of alterations. But there's a vibe there, there's a community character there, there's a feeling, there's cultural value there. How do you recognize and honor a place like that that's a bit different than Maywood, where it's the traditional architecture, the materials, the character? So trying to think of flexible, kind of creative ideas to broaden how we preserve places.
And this also might work in places where you've got, like, some longtime immigrant communities with businesses and homes and like the little commercial districts, again, same thing where you're not looking at sort of fine architectural details, but there's an importance in terms of, you know, if you start to see everything torn down, then there's no, the buildings aren't there to tell the story. So thinking about what is it that's important to tell the story, but it's not something like Maywood or Buckingham or where there's all that detail that's in town.
I have a T-shirt from about twenty years ago from Clarendon Day, and it was, Clarendon, keep it weird. And that was the reputation that Clarendon had, but unfortunately, I think Clarendon has lost a lot of its weirdness because of development, and I think it's too bad that we weren't able to keep Clarendon weird.
Maybe you should have called them like, keep it weird. Keep it weird district. Keep it quirky district.
But I think in context, you know, as part of your engagement, Jackie, when you were talking to stakeholders and property owners and advocates, there was this desire to have more flexibility, to be less stringent. And I think this is a way, getting back to what we were all talking about before, is getting that buy-in. How do we get the community support for preserving place and community that offers more options? And that's what this goal is getting at.
I mean, people were, there were, people were asking about Okay, I was like, am I saying the wrong number? People were asking about places like Twenty-third Street Act. It was interesting because places like that were coming up and they were saying, well, what are we going to do about preserving someplace like that? So I think right now there's interest in sort of these quirkier places. But, but we also recognize that maybe the traditional way that we've done preservation is close but not quite, right? It's like, it's not a square peg in a round hole, it's like a rectangular peg in a square hole. And we're trying to figure out, like, how do we make this, how do we make this work? And we, what it turns out is we have the tools, we just have to think a little bit differently about how we apply them. And so I think you have some people who are interested, like Cynthia's had interest, people have been kind of asking from some of these communities. And I think that there will be a chance for you all to try this on and kind of make some mistakes and have some wins and adjust it, but. I'm excited about this one.
Do you envision that for like residential neighborhoods at all, or are you?
I would, yes.
I would love to see this.
We already have, I think we already have an idea of which ones we'd like to apply.
Because I think your biggest threat to preservation right now is townhouse.
Right. Well, yeah, nice to see.
That hasn't changed in seventeen years.
Yeah. I, I definitely have, when I've talked to neighbors about, like, you know, they're like, well, you know, yeah, I like the older homes, but, you know, I don't want, you know, someone to tell me what to do.
I don't want someone to tell me what color to paint it.
Yeah.
But you don't want to tell me what color to paint it.
Which I'm like, well, actually, but, you know, so I mean, yeah, like, if it was for preservation light, like, some of them kind of sometimes, like, you know.
To get a sense, too, of what we're calling the Neighborhood Heritage District, like the city of Charlottesville has something very similar, kind of what inspired this suggestion, you know, they have what they call neighborhood conservation areas, which I think to use that term here would be confusing because we have conservation areas on the Pike, we had a neighborhood conservation program that's now called something else. And so, but basically, it's that light concept where you're looking at specific aspects of a historic area and regulating certain things about it in a certain way, but a little bit different than the traditional approach.
Well, and not to get too detailed, but one of the things that I think in historic neighborhoods that's happening that's really too bad is the setbacks are not being respected, so the new homes are all like five to ten feet out in front. And then you don't even see the historic homes really, you live out the street because it's picking out.
Yep.
But, you know, that's a pretty small thing, you know, it doesn't tell you how, it just says, yeah, it's all the other historic homes.
Yeah, if you had a, you could have an historic district that just respects the historic setbacks that the developer put in place, because that's for some districts, some neighborhoods, that's really what defines, or streets, that's what, that's what defines it, like Commonwealth Avenue in Alexandria, a lot of people think that's one of the nicest. And it's because of the setbacks, okay, and the, the streetscape. And that's what's being destroyed by these big mansions that are being put in and not observing the original setback.
Well, and in a few neighborhoods, it's actually the opposite, in that the historic homes are closer to the street and now they have to set the new homes back.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. And I think, in the detail, when you read, what we are saying is that you would look at each one as its own thing. So I think, you know, so in one, it might be the setback, and it might be that you have a neighborhood, you know, some of your neighborhoods, like, everything's red brick, right? So you might identify a material, and that, you might suggest a material, a setback, something else. But in another neighborhood, it might be about scale, it might be about, so it, it just depends on who you're dealing with. But I think it gives you a chance to scale down how many things are, you're not just applying all the guidelines to.
We're excited about this one.
Yeah.
The potential.
So. We're also looking at what kinds of resources we apply regulatory tools to. So, these objectives address high-risk, underrepresented, and less protected items, including archaeology. Did we skip yours, Katie, or something you wanted to talk about?
Well, I think we did, that was it. And.
I don't want to miss something.
You know, no, I think that was the one, like, the area. I think, the only reason I was even bringing it up too is, I think the other thing that I saw in Denver a lot that it doesn't seem like we do here is some pretty like large, like, density incentives to maintain historic structures when you're in that demolition, like, period. You know, and so, that, that seemed like when the county wanted to increase density, that never seemed to be like an option, that like they would maybe hold something back. Say, well, if it's a historic structure, or maybe if it's, you know, affordable units, then you can do this much density. But it seems like their density rules are just kind of more about where you are and how, much more comprehensive. But that density would have been something you could.
And I think it, I think it goes back in some ways to that conversation we were having earlier about how preservation positions itself, not to always ask for, or to. Jurisdiction, whether it's the jurisdiction or preservation itself, like, not always positioned in a way like, affordable housing will get in there and be like, you know, affordable units, and then you can have some density, right? Like, every jurisdiction I've ever worked in, that's exactly where they are, and they are not afraid to do it, whether it's the nonprofit affordable housing developer or the local jurisdiction, right, that's supporting it through site plan review. But for some reason, in preservation's case, it's some jurisdictions we're doing it, but in a lot, we're just not. We're, we're like sitting back and waiting on someone to offer.
Right, yeah, and I think Denver's was, do like two additional stories.
Doesn't want those stories downtown.
Yeah. In the setback. You know, because you were losing that development potential, kind of. From the side, so they were really.
So, in the underrepresented stuff, that we, we called out a couple of things. First, just generally, we talked about prioritizing application of tools to the highest risk and least protected resource. So, that could apply to any number of things, that could be high-risk things in the moment, but that could be longer-term, high-risk things. So, you can think about the HRI, calling things out, but keep in mind, the HRI is, has not comprehensively surveyed the county. So, we love the HRI, it's important, but keep in mind, that is not a comprehensive survey of the county that everything has been sorted into, we've only surveyed a certain set of resources. So, we have things like large lot, you know, we have limited large lots these days, but like, we always know that anything that has a larger lot is high-risk, for example, in the county. We have, so just thinking through kind of what's your rolodex of high-risk and less protected cities.
So, is that, I was gonna ask you what vision that category, other.
You'll see.
Large lots, is that, I mean, is that?
Large lots is one. When you say, when we see underrepresented, it's up there as well. Underrepresented, we can always talk about anything that tells a story of BIPOC communities, so African-American, or, I wouldn't say American Indian, but I don't, we've got so little of that, it's almost.
And it's like, when you do a breakdown of, you know, what Arlington has listed on the National Register and how many of the 42 local districts that Arlington County has protected, there's a fraction of them that honor African-American history, but that's where the diversity stops. You don't have any other.
Vietnamese.
Cultures and peoples represented within our own historic resources. So, being able to expand that cultural tradition and heritage is really important to us.
Especially when you look at how diverse the county is as a whole. You can't necessarily hope, you can't necessarily. I don't know if your goal, I don't know if your goal is to be exactly representative, to present it, I'll say that. I don't know if it is. But you're not, you're not there at all now, and you're not different than any other jurisdiction. That's not aspersions to Arlington, nationally, we are not there. We are a very low percentage of the National Register level in terms of those representations, but we're getting better. So, just when you think about doing surveys, when you're looking at National Register nominations, when you're doing things, it's thinking about, okay, well, where are we, what don't, what haven't we captured much of all, of at all? And how do, you know, like, I love your garden apartments, I did, I worked on the first plan, right? But I feel like we've done a lot with garden apartments. So, it's probably not time. Like, if I'm saying this out loud, I'm not, okay, I'm gonna stop talking, because I don't know if I can make these words come out of my mouth, but.
I think I don't.
Let me jump in, let me jump in. So, I think commercial property.
Except for Henry Gardens.
Well, I mean, Fort Henry Gardens.
But understanding the cultural tradition and evolution of garden apartments, that would be a fascinating study of how the groups of people and the different ethnicities and countries that have been represented over garden apartments over the past several decades, we've never studied that. And that would be a fascinating case study beyond just garden apartments as a genre of architecture, and what that represents.
Right.
Right. Could it also apply to a block of, you know, mostly minority and immigrant housing businesses? And stuff like that?
Yes. Where are the stories that haven't been told, the communities that haven't been captured in the physical preservation of the county? That's what, that's what we're getting at with this.
And, but it's, does it imply the actual protection of the physical aspect of it? Or is it really all about?
It's, I think it's both.
Researching and knowing the story.
It's both, it's the understanding, but it's also where possible, preservation, where there's willingness.
You know what else is missing? This came up a couple times in this thing, we didn't write this in the document. If you want it, we should put it in the summer edits. It came up multiple times in this planning, how many sort of like national organizations were birthed here in Arlington? Good and bad. And natural. Those of you who know the history, know what I'm talking about.
With the American, not.
And that history is not really captured very well in terms of our, sort of our preservation, this work marker. And so, think, you know, that's in a lot of ways, an underrepresented story and an underrepresented cultural heritage here in the county. It's all just like flying under the radar in a lot of ways. But it's not always, it is a lot of times about identity groups, if you will, but it's not always. Sometimes it's just about like, what are the stories we just totally missed? And I would say that's one too, it's just like, how, everyone talks about DC as like this national capital, but in a lot of ways, Arlington was like this place where all these national things were happening, and yet, those stories aren't really. We drive around and people are like, oh, yeah, that's where the national blah 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 started. It's like, wait, oh, okay.
One sort of general comment that I have, and this, so of course, to what you were just saying, is, I haven't read the whole thing, I just started to read, and sort of went through it. I thought this was gonna be more about a plan for historic resources. Okay, when I started reading it, it looks more like a work plan for the Historic Preservation Office, okay? And. I just thought that it would look, it would be better from a presentation standpoint, if not to, for our objective to be, how do we best manage historic, from a governmental standpoint, to the extent that the government has a role in managing historic resources, how do we do that best in Arlington, rather than. And, I mean, even adding the word cultural, I thought that that was gonna refer to more art.
The title confused you. We need to change the title again. Because it is a work plan for the Historic Preservation Program.
Okay, well, that's, I didn't think it was gonna be that.
That is what it is.
That is what it is.
It's a strategic plan for this work.
But it, but it also guides not only our programmatic work, but also policy for the county in dealing with history, cultural resources, preservation. So, it, it really does serve dual purposes in that regard.
But it, but what it is not is a community-engaged plan for historic and cultural resources that all of the organizations that work in that sphere in the county have gotten on board.
That's what I thought it was gonna be.
I hear what you're saying, like, here's the way, right? And we've all agreed, like a.
Yeah, like, for instance, there's.
Like a heritage area plan.
There's an arts commission, okay, in Arlington. And, I don't know.
This is a county plan, but the government.
You consulted them or not, but I think they.
They were in one of our focus groups. They were in one of our focus groups, but as a partner.
Hey, we're in charge of, mostly in charge of cultural resources, what is the Historic Preservation Office? And it's maybe a word, wording thing, but. No, they do have a program that's run by the Arts Commission, I think, where they give grants.
And we're in close collaboration with them and their partners.
Yeah, and I know when, you know, seven, maybe 10 years ago or so, when Jay Fazette was on the Capitol, he wanted to open that plan up to give grants to, for, for history also. And they do some, give some grants that are kind of cultural grants, like they, I blessed, when I looked at it last time, it was like to, I think there was a Vietnamese Cultural Society or something like that, and they gave them, which you could argue is that culture or is that history, you know, or what it was. But some of the grants that they gave were arguably history grants, but they resisted it when Jay suggested that.
Yes.
Those grants be.
Not.
Perhaps divided between cultural programs, that the history programs be eligible for those grants. And they said no, and I think because there was some discussion as to whether the HLRB should have a role, like, the Arts Commission has a role in deciding who gets those grants. And they didn't want the HLRB to be looking over their shoulder, helping divide the money at all, okay? But I think it, you know, especially now that we're talking about bringing these not well-represented groups like the Vietnamese Cultural Society, maybe we could take a look at, take another look at whether that ordinance should be changed to allow some of those, some of those grants to be, in HLRB to have some role, or the Historic Preservation Office to have some role in deciding who gets those grants. Because right now, it's pretty much artists and not historical researchers, or, you know, cultural organizations, minority cultural, so, I guess, I think, in fact, I recall, they were kind of pretty much open to giving money to, for cultural histories of Arlington, but not anything other than kind of, I'll say, I use the word ethnic, and I know that's kind of, that's not a.
Well, I think one thing I.
Easy word these days.
I just want to mention in terms of the use of the word cultural. I mean, we debated for a very long time throughout our planning process at, as a team, but also with other county colleagues and staff, as well as county leadership, about the appropriate title. And we felt that historic preservation captures one element of what we do. And as you read the plan and really sit with it and digest it, you'll see that many of the goals, a lot of the information that's presented, and the direction that we want to take the program, is more, is beyond more than just, it's not just about preserving place-specific buildings anymore. It's about cultural identity, it's about building a sense of community. And so, we felt that incorporating the word cultural into our title, you know, helps underscore that. And, and I think because we are introducing a new name in a very, I think, creative and aspirational plan overall, that there's a, a level of education that's going to have to happen, and outreach and engagement that we are going to need to do as staff to kind of explain our use of terminology with culture and historic and everything in between. But we wanted to make sure that our title, in particular, captures the full breadth of what it is we are trying to accomplish as a program, which is a great segue to talk about the other goal up here on this slide, what we don't have yet.
Archaeology, thinking of underrepresented and high-risk. Archaeology is here, and you see, actually, this is pretty lofty, we didn't really use these words yet. We were asked to make sure that the plan was aspirational, and there are some things in here that are gonna be pretty big aspirational things, like adjusting the LHD designation process with the state, for example, but I think establishing an archaeology program, we've got an ordinance, a plan, and developing a review process as part of this, there's really a plan to have staff. This can't get done without the addition of archaeology staff, so I'm gonna go ahead and say that publicly, because there's no way that the people that you're looking at can do this in addition to what they already do. And so, this is a really big change. And I'm seeing nationally that more and more jurisdictions are adding archaeology to their preservation practice. For a long time. Not everyone, but, you know, it was easy to, easier to ignore what was underground until you ran into something that you couldn't ignore, but I think more and more jurisdictions are sort of realizing, like, it's better for us to be proactive and kind of figure out where we have resources and where there are stories we don't want to ignore. And so, this is a really exciting thing to be adding in.
I think that's a great idea. And just a couple of questions about it.
Sure.
So, what would be the county's authority to go and, I assume we're talking about digging stuff up, right?
I'm just gonna.
About archaeology about, I mean, no?
Um, actually, so it's a little less in B and M Jones these days than it used to be. It's actually, the gold standard for.
Is it treasure?
The, I'm sure there's.
It is there, it's all in the neighborhood.
We leave it. The gold standard now is that we leave it in the ground if we can. And so, but what we often see with these programs is that things get dug up when there's development, right? And so, a lot of what a program like this would see, would be, and you see some of it now, I know you guys have been working on some observation and.
Monitoring.
Work. Oh, I don't wanna, I'll let you talk about that if you want, but I, but you see more kind of working with folks on things like site plan review, but beginning, you know, through research, you can get a sense. Serena's, Serena's still on the phone, I know you, I think, didn't, hasn't she done some work on starting to identify potential sites? I feel like we talked about that at one point.
We did a literature search, yeah.
After the first plan, I know, in the 2000s, but that was kind of, you've got what you've been able to do.
Interesting.
How do you have the authority to, for instance, at a prospective development site, to go in and?
Require archaeology?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's sort of like current, like, landscape of this, I mean, like.
So, this is a good example of where we don't have something on paper on how the county should act when, you know, Project A or B maybe runs into a potential archaeological site. And we've been kind of doing that on.
Like everything else.
And, you know, so, and we've been successful in saying, you know, we strongly recommend a developer, for example, to do archaeological monitoring, or even go beyond that, thinking of digging. There's different phases that archaeology goes through before they go all the way down and dig all the way 10 feet down.
Shovel tips.
And, yeah, like, it's, it's, there's a lot more before you get to that step. And we've been able to successfully tell a developer, when we think that there might be an archaeological site, that they should do that before they, you know, even maybe get through the whole site plan process, because it's in their best interest. As we basically say, if you hit something of interest, which fortunately, our site plan conditions say that, if there is maybe some type of archaeological value that you hit, you have to, you have to contact the Historic Preservation Office, you may have to contact the state, depending on what's found. And that can cause delays, so if we already identify it, let's go ahead and just get the process moving. We ended up doing that with GBG, with the Amazon headquarters thing, because they ended up doing a Phase 1, a Phase 2, where they were trying to see if there was no, if there was any more of the Alexandria Canal there anymore. And after they did what we requested that they did, we determined that it wasn't there, that it had not been there anymore, that development had basically moved it at some point, or it was more to the northeast of that site. That would have been great if we had an archaeologist on staff to lead those discussions. Instead, we had to go through a process where we find a contractor to do that for us, and, or the developer does it, but then again, a developer hires a consultant, they're in their best interest for that client, Arlington County not being their client. So, we've been having to do a dance in different ways. We, so we've been having to do a dance in different ways. And when it comes to counting the properties, we've been fortunate that we have great relationships with our colleagues, and we have good partnerships with different departments, where we say, we really think it would be in your best interest to do this process before you decide you're going to develop a property, sell a property, or buy a property. We've been doing that a lot lately, especially with more development coming through in Arlington County, that's increased. And that really hasn't, we feel, hasn't been on the county's radar as much as it should be, just why we would have formalized it.
We need to formalize it, and our training is not such, we're all trained as architectural historians. We've dabbled in archaeology, but we don't meet the Secretary of Material Standards for dealing with archaeology. Um, and then the other thing I'll add to, especially on the, on the county projects, on county property, we have boxes of artifacts, things that have been collected over the years that need to be curated properly and that could be interpreted, and they could be part of public education, but right now they're sitting in boxes in our office, because we don't have the capacity to be able to use those as educational tools. So there's definitely, I think, an opportunity here to be able to expand our program to address archaeological needs.
Well, and I'd imagine a county archaeologist, too, would come in handy for private homeowners, either find things just because the kids were digging, or a permitted project where they're putting in a pond, and all of a sudden they find something.
And finds a well that happened here.
Exactly, and there's a, there's a established county authority. Sex and shit.
Or that.
And the number of times that has happened in Arlington is long, right?
I love, I, well, am I on? Yeah. All right. Last one.
Uh, last category is technology, information, and tools. And these goals address the information that we need to do historic preservation planning and policy. So the first objective, which is this whole slide, address, this is our H R I conversation, correcting issues with the H R I, expanding its usefulness, so this is all that good stuff. So we're gonna make corrections to Phase One of the H R I. We're gonna provide clearer policy requirements for H R I listed properties, um, that G I S request, and Phase Two of the H R I.
Long existing property.
Well, we got it. Well, I mean, we haven't, we should explore that as something we might want to...
Might want to...
Yeah, like, if, if there's, we don't know, we don't know exactly what we're gonna find if we explore the H R I, when we do a Phase Two to it. We don't, we need to kind of figure that out. We have not assessed the condition of what these properties have been of, since it's been adopted, so that's something we should have at least.
Haven't we lost them?
Yes, we definitely have, Sarah. But on the converse, things have been protected, things that were essential, some now have easements, some that are important might now be a local district. So we have to assess those. We also need to assess just the clarity of the data. We have, like, an interception listed for a large garden apartment like Colonial Village. As we know, Colonial Village is actually dozens of buildings with hundreds of addresses, so we should be able, we need to be able to capture more accurately, being able to correct dates, being able to look at buildings that should have been captured. Maybe it was a historic commercial building or a shopping center that was of a certain age, but for whatever reason was not surveyed in the early two thousands, and so therefore is missing. There are things that likely have come of age. Do we expand the end cap, or when is the, like, period of significance end? So there's so many things that we would need to look at, but we want to start with being able to correct, update, make this Phase One list from 2011 as useful as possible, all these years later.
Yeah, that's great. It is, that's really great, because it is, it's a really hidden document. When you look at it, it's got addresses on it, and that's about it.
Yeah, and some dates, you know, like, studying bar crap, for example, and, and working with the new owners of that complex. They hired a preservation consultant, we booked up all the historic building permit records and drawings, and we found out that the dates that we have in the H R I are not quite correct. And so there's little things like that that would need to be updated to make it as useful.
But the, but the, I guess, I don't know, the sympathy is that buildings aren't gonna come off with the H R I.
They might not necessarily come off, but they could shift categories. Let's say something has been altered and been a major addition, or so many drastic changes that it no longer reads as an important building, there's a possibility it could shift to a lower category. I mean, that's the, this is going to be a labor-intensive update.
Or, or is it possible that something, commercially, is it possible that if something is like the very last African-American-built segregated garden apartment complex in the county, it might live into the essential?
Possible.
Just, just as an example.
Or, yeah. Yes. And it's, and that's, and I think that a lot of our, I think that a lot of our colleagues were hoping that we would have that, like, magic one pager, this is what needs to be done to the H R, H R I to prove it or make it better. And it's, it's a big, it's a big lift, a big lift that needs to be done.
You're contracting it out.
It's gotta be. There's no way, there's no way that we would go.
They can't do it in-house. That gives to the delicate situation of...
Prepare yourself.
The budget, they can't...
Yeah. But, yeah, I mean, I can see, I, I'm sorry for my very specific, but I have anxiety. But, you know, there are things in the, I think there are things in the county deck that could move up in importance, because after seventeen years, their, their colleagues, if you will, are gone, so maybe it's now the last of its kind.
Only one left.
Only one left, for, you know, without being specific, or...
Luston Homes.
Yeah, right?
Because the more information we have, the better we're gonna be able...
Or you have more information about it.
Or be able to make more of an argument to, to keep it and preserve it, and, or if we find that...
Or if you find it's been completely, you know, like the house I saw in one of the neighborhoods, someone cut the top off of it and added a second story, you know, you might decide perhaps it's no longer in an important category because it's been completely changed. It, it's not to, you know, I think you have to, you're gonna have to weigh what still has its significance in the same way.
Have you thought about, like, one of the things we constantly run into is that H R does include residential properties?
Well...
And should we have a similar tool for residential...
You talked about what you want for Phase Two, right?
Well, Phase Two, we've been thinking over the years that it would make sense to look at institutional properties, county properties, things like schools, community centers, those public buildings, those are missing. And I think from a, a long-term maintenance perspective and management perspective, having some kind of ranking for county-owned buildings can only help us in the long term, allocate, you know, financial resources, maintenance needs, all those things. I think...
You'll have to work with school board on that.
Oh, yeah. We had a lot of conversations...
We made some progress over the years.
We had a lot of conversations with the schools. But I think to broaden it beyond what we're envisioning as Phase Two to, like, be a Phase Three to capture residential properties, I think that would be very, very challenging to do here in Arlington, and being in Virginia. I, I just don't know if that's possible.
I don't, I wonder if you could do something, I'm just gonna throw this out here, I don't think you could capture in the H R I necessarily, because you couldn't, well, I don't know if you could or not. I wonder if you could do something where you did it by neighborhood? And so instead of capturing an individual residential property, you could do the neighborhoods and look at them as archetypes of, you know, the development type and what story they tell and, um, what condition they are.
You could do that, but to what end? I mean, it, it strikes me as a political workaround.
Then we create micro districts. Then we create micro districts.
I mean, if you're gonna...
Good question. What's your outcome?
You know, look at those neighborhoods, the historic district is probably most effective.
I was thinking it might help you prioritize where you focus for trying to sort of advocate for districts that don't necessarily go by ranking.
Well, I think we have enough to correct with what we have and enough to think about for the Phase Two.
That's gonna keep us. All right. It's almost nine o'clock, so I'm gonna do the last slide. Um, this is a more general, um, the second goal looks at ways to increase the preservation data available, really, and so it gets at that a few different ways. Generally, looking at doing additional architectural and cultural surveys and studies, specifically completing the African-American multiple property documentation, Heritage Survey, which I think was started in 2016, is that right, Cynthia?
At least.
I think.
Before that.
Uh, sharing Arlington's historic preservation data information and physical records, so just acknowledging, like, there's a lot of information, this is broad, but there's a lot of information here in this building, and people are interested in getting it, so thinking through kind of ways to make that available. There's a lot of, some of that maybe will be lower priority or harder to get at, others might be a little bit more attainable or more high priority as you start to sort through that. Um, and this, establishing a county-wide historic archival records program and records management function, this, again, would require staff, this is not something the staff you're looking at could do, but this would actually manage all of this preservation data and information, it would make this a more doable thing, it would actually address some things that were, um, recommended, and I'm not gonna get the name of the task force right, but...
The Arlington History Task Force.
Um, the county had countywide concerns about a sort of lack of management of the historical records in the county, and so we saw this as a way, not just to get at the historic preservation records, but the historical record keeping for the county. Um, so I think there's support for that. And then this last one, I, I think is really exciting, even though it reads really boring, inventory and integrate the risks for historic properties into historic preservation information system. You know, there's a lot of conversation right now about sustainability, climate change impacts, and weather impacts, about, you know, the kinds of risks that historic properties have, um, we've been talking about, um, risks, things like being a large lot property, right? Development pressures. And sort of looking at, how do we look at these preservation systems like the H R I or others where you've got information about, um, either designated or surveyed historic properties, and how do you begin to layer that with information about risk, right? So that you really can begin to get proactive? Because I think that where this staff, um, you have an excellent staff, but you also have a staff that is often driven into a space where they're reactive, because these things come in and, and so then they're kind of like running to get those things handled. And so how do we get proactive and begin to see, like, this risk is coming, these are the risks that are likely to come down the pipe for these different things, and to begin to do things like maybe reach out to a series of property and it was like, hey, you know, are you interested in talking, are you interested in talking to us about possible preservation methodologies, et cetera, kind of recognizing where there might be risks that would be converging on certain properties? So that's the dream, right? Begin to have conversations with property owners that might be in a space where they have both significance and risk. Before, we're in a space where one person is nominating them and they didn't know about it and ate all the things we were talking about.
So in terms of how people can get involved, you wanna go to that very last?
Yeah. We've been discussing.
Yeah, we've been discussing the whole time.
Do you wanna do this one?
Yeah, so, you know, we, we hope you feel inspired now to really, you know, dive into the plan and, and read through, hopefully the whole thing, but particularly those areas of interest that resonated with you from our conversation tonight. And as you're reading, you know, consider going to the, the link there, and we'll, we'll share this PowerPoint with you tomorrow, so you can actually have the direct link, but we have a, an online feedback form that is on our program page that corresponds to specific aspects of the plan. Um, we would love for your feedback, we would love for you to be able to share that with your friends, neighbors, associates, others who might be interested in historic preservation. Um, and then you'll be hearing us talk about it over the coming months, you know, there will be opportunities to, to work with us to help be champions in the community about the plan and what it represents. We have lots of pop-ups we're gonna be going to, um, we have our big community open house that we've been telling you about on Saturday, May sixth, and thank you to those who volunteered to, to help with us, help us with that. But there's going to be many opportunities to continue to stay engaged. Um, and then as we get closer to the summer timeframe and we're responding to all the feedback, not only from the H L R B, but also from the public at large, and, and making a final draft version of this plan that we would present to, um, the county board, we would definitely like to have H L R B support to, kind of like what we do with site plans and local district nominations, to be the champions who then, you know, speak on, on the plans behalf at the public meetings associated with this plan adoption. So there's many different ways for you to stay involved. We will definitely return to you all in August is our target, um, to continue the conversation. We can go through each goal again, we can just focus on specific questions, we can figure that out, but we really do value your input, especially because you are partners for us and all of our, our daily work. Thank you for your, your time and your thoughtful comments tonight. Really great conversation.
Yes, thank you, yeah. When do you take the, so, there'll be all this sort of public communication stuff, and is the next big step, the county board reviewing it, or how does that...
That'll be the end step. So right now, with, with the plan release just having happened, our big push is for community engagement, and so Michael's been working really hard behind the scenes to make sure that we can go to all different types of community, um, events, whether it's farmers markets, other events that are happening, happening in the county that we're piggy, piggybacking on and having a presence. Our big open house is specifically about this plan and what we do as a program. Um, so there's many, and, and the other main purpose of all that engagement, too, of course, is to get community feedback. What's resonating, are there things missing, are there things that are confusing? We need to be able to analyze that over these coming months to prepare the draft, the final draft of the plan. And so the final step then would be going to the, the county commission. So we would need to go to the planning commission, we would ultimately need to go to the county board. So the board would need to adopt this update to the, to the plan.
Do you have a sense when that...
Our target for that is October. Yeah, so we would like to come back to the H L R B in August, kind of for another round of discussion, um, hopefully some type of formal motion, recommendation about the plan, and then we would carry that forward to do a request to advertise with both the planning commission and the county board, and then the actual adoption hearings at both the planning commission and county board. So late summer into early fall is going to be the main push for the public hearings. Um, and so there will be many opportunities beyond tonight, obviously, to engage, ask questions, give us comments.
Do you have any engagement plans for developers? I don't know if they belong to, they belong to Arlington Chamber of Commerce, is that, or small businesses? I'm not sure the developers are really kind of organized.
We interviewed a couple of them.
I believe there is a developer organization.
I'm thinking just of them, but there is a... Family Preservation, someone that we met, talking about his donation grant, but, but I think mainly the input that we've received from developers have been during the special feedback, I mean, during the first year.
It might be good of something, and so, now that we have a plan.
And, and we do have a whole...
I don't know if they would read it, but to offer it to them.
We have a whole communications plan that we developed with our communications staff as to how we're promoting this draft and all the types of engagement that we're planning to do and have done already. We can look at that, revisit that. I feel like there was, we've done some targeted emails, I believe, to the business developer community, but I, I think we, I know enough people that we can contact in, in the county on who to talk to in the developer world that should read it. And so I think it's a good suggestion. And I think that we can reach out to Piper, and we can reach out to Erin, and kind of get maybe the top five, just as like my initial thought.
People you know, so that they would be...
Yes.
Yeah.
Maybe G would be the perfect one, to be a part of that, I think that's...
Does it mean while please read, please fill out the feedback form, take a look at our website, we thought, there's a little video summary on there, we thought, all sorts of ways to kind of digest this document.
Well, thank you for putting this...
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
Thank you for your patience. It's been so long to get it to you, but you did it.
It's been a long time.
It's great.
And thank you, Jackie, for being here.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Jackie.
We appreciate you. Anybody online have anything they'd like to say? Bella, you...
No, it sounds like you guys have covered quite a bit of groundwork and, uh, everything sounds good.
Thank you for tuning in.
Sure, thank you, folks. Sure, thank you, folks, for the meeting. See you next time.
All right, take good care.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye, Serena.
Night, sorry I couldn't be there. Bye.